There we go. Good evening and welcome to the June 28th meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. Per open meeting law, this meeting is being recorded. Is there anyone in the audience also recording this meeting? Seeing none, we turn and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, created in the [inaudible].
All right. We have no public comment, and under public hearings and presentations, there is none. For communications, we have a letter from Mass. Lottery Commission on keynote to-go in Auburn at the Auburn Package Store. Do we need a motion to take this with Agenda Item 5A? The one and the same. Oh, Caleb's in. All right, with that, I'll turn things over to, I guess, the town manager and to Caleb Moody to talk about that.
Great, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. So, we receive notifications from the Mass. Lottery Commission, and if the board doesn't have to take any action, if you don't want to dispute it, or deny it, or mention any concerns, but if you do want to mention concerns, I believe you have a certain period of time in which to do so. So, we did have a few days to be able to do that with today's meeting. So, we wanted to bring it to your attention. When I originally saw the notice, I sent it to Caleb because I just wanted to make sure there were no potential issues. I was more thinking of signage because of our sign-by law. So, I just sent it to Caleb. Can you take a look at it? And I wanted Caleb to respond. It's, I'll just turn to Caleb Moody, who's at the other commission.
Thank you. Through the chair, the main concern, I don't so much have a concern if they do it, I just think they need to show us how they're going to accomplish it. Currently, the store has a keynote-to-go operation, and they're looking to put a monitor in the store for a regular keynote. It's a very small store and a very small parking lot, so I just, usually, we had another convenience store right down the street want to do a keynote lounge with seating and put a monitor in there, and I don't see how they're going to accomplish that. So, we're just looking for more information if they're looking to put seating in there, and if they're, if they are, do they have the parking to support it and the space to support it? So, I'm not against it, I just think we need to get more information.
Do board members have any questions or comments?
Yes, through the chair, have we discussed with the applicant the concerns of the town in terms of, you know?
I haven't spoken to the applicant. The only notice I got was from Julie when she forwarded the notice from the state.
Okay. I agree with you wholeheartedly. It's tight in there, wall to wall.
Yeah, it's small space. The parking lot's similar, there's not a lot of parking out there.
Yeah, yeah. And as far as the objection, we have 21 days. This letter we got wasn't dated. When does that time begin?
For the chair, we're laughing because when we all saw the letter, it was, the letter was dated, I think, 2019.
Oh, right.
So, we had to get back to the state through the clerk's office and try to get a new letter. The new letter that came in didn't have a date, so I think we have to kind of go by the email.
Was it June 15th?
Yes.
Should be June 15th.
So, I believe the date turned out to be around July 7th or 8th that we would have to notify the state. So, our thought was, before we brought the applicant in, we just wanted to have Caleb explain to you what his concerns were. If you agree that we should even pursue it, we can reach out to the applicant and let him know what the concerns are about the space, and I think if he addresses those concerns, there'd be no reason for the board to take a vote to oppose it. If he can, if he can address the concerns, that's the issue.
Can we get that done before the 7th?
We can absolutely talk to him and see, because he's either going to be willing to move forward, he wouldn't be able to get his approvals. But we could also notify the Lottery Commission. It was a little mix-up down on the state level as far as the dates and how long we had, so I believe if the new letter came out, it took him a few days to get back to us on the new letter. So, I think we actually have a couple more days, but we can still get back to them and tell them that the board is having the applicant address an issue that might have to do with planning board and ask them to hold off on it. I think, yeah, so I guess my recommendation maybe would be to have the board take a vote tonight to notify the Lottery Commission that we have a couple of concerns related to the site plan, and ask if we can have a little time to look into it, because if it does need amendment, there was no way to get that done in the timeframe they gave us.
Mr. Berthin?
Well, I would, I would agree to letting them know and holding off. My concern is that, you know, you have a store that doesn't have a lot of room, you put in a monitor, and now you have people hanging out in that store. Typically, if you have a keynote lounge, or, you know, I think of restaurants and things like that that have a keynote lounge, and, you know, you have a drink while you're watching your keynote, whether it be a Coke or whatever, it doesn't matter, but, you know, you're not really allowed to, like, buy a beer and open it in a store and sit and drink a beer while you're, while you're watching, you know, looking at your keynote, and so I'm not really sure, you know, that that doesn't promote a bunch of hanging around a package store for people and, you know. But having said that, I'd love to hear what the Auburn Package Store has in mind for this, because it might be, you know, something of a new thing to come and something that we can address, but I definitely would not vote to accept anything or renew anything before I kind of heard what they had in mind.
So, the original letter was dated 2019. Did they apply in 2019 as well, or was it just an error?
Through the chair, I believe it was an error at the State Lottery Commission. It sounds like it's a standard letter that they send out to various license holders of this, and they just used an old boilerplate letter.
Other board members? I'll just say that I'm in half agreement. I really don't see much of a concern with this, having been to the Package Store, it's down the street from my house, it's small, but I can't see there being many people in there, even with a keynote monitor, but I would like to hear from them as well. So, if the board wants to hold off and exercise its right to hold on, then we'll be in agreement.
So, if I could, through the chair, so should we be making a motion to send a letter back to the Lottery Commission explaining that we'd like a little bit, see if they'd give us more time?
That would be my recommendation, to just say you have a couple of concerns to look into that may be resolved readily, or may require extra time if it needs additional board approval.
I'll make that motion.
And then, we can reach out, the letter actually went to the chair and the town clerk, so we can work through the town clerk to get back to the state.
So, I'll make that motion.
All right, motion been made by Mr. Berthin. Is there a second? All right, motion been made and seconded. We don't have to do a roll call vote anymore, actually. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous.
So, we will draft that letter for you and leave it for the chair to sign and have, we'll work through the clerk, and then, in the meantime, I think my recommendation would be we could reach out to the Package Store this week and let them know that there's, yeah.
Have Chandler Adam reach out tomorrow.
Perfect. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Caleb.
Thank you, Caleb.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item 5B. We have an update on the vacancy of the, on the Library Board of Trustees, in process for filing such vacancy, so we have the letter in your packets. With that, I'll turn things over to the town manager.
Through the chair, thank you. Some of you have been through this process before, so I just am here tonight to just let you know and let the newer members know what the process is and what is involved here, and why we've come to this point. So, we did have a member of the Library Board of Trustees whose term was expiring at the next election, at this past election, who opted not to run for reelection, so the seat was vacant. Nobody had taken out papers for that seat, and there was a, there were actually two writing candidates, one got six votes and one got seven votes, and so the person who got the seven, the seven votes is the candidate that would be chosen. It doesn't default to the second candidate. So, that person is supposed to be sworn in within seven days of notification of the court. So, the court sent the letter, notified the candidate that he had been selected as a writing candidate with seven votes, and to get in touch with her as soon as possible to get sworn in. Never heard back, I think she sent, I'm not going to say she sent the second letter, but she at least made two phone calls. In the meantime, about two to three weeks had gone by, and there was no word from the candidate. So, we had to reach out to town council to ask now what is the process, the candidate's not responding. Is this a vacant seat or isn't it? And town council determined it is considered a failure to elect because the candidate didn't get sworn in within the required amount of time, and at that point, three weeks had gone by. About a day after that determination was made, we did get a letter from the candidate stating that he was not interested in taking the seat. So, therefore, we have a vacancy. Now, we revert to the process under Chapter 41, Section 11, which is how to fill a vacancy. So, the Board of Trustees did the right thing by the process and sent a letter to the chair that there is a vacancy and that they would like to proceed under Chapter 41, Section 11, which means, because they notified you within 30 days of the vacancy, that means that you have a joint meeting with the Library Board of Trustees, and some of you have done this before, and it's a joint vote. So, there are five remaining members of the Board of Trustees, there's five of you, so there are potentially 10 votes. And we are going to be looking into what happens if there's a tie, we talked about that, what happens if there would be multiple candidates and there was a tie between the boards and we didn't know which candidate to choose from. So, we're, we're talking to town council about that. But the vote most likely wouldn't take place until August, so we knew that this was happening when we saw this letter and we heard from town council, so we posted the vacancy last week. It's on Auburn Cable TV, it's on our social media site, it's on our website, so we're promoting it, so it's out there, and I'm happy to say, I think as of today, we've received either two, if not three, applications. So, we ended up sending it through the school distribution list, and that usually triggers additional applications, and it was great. I think two actually came in today just because of the school sending it out. So, we put a deadline of it of July 23rd for candidates to apply, figuring that would give us time to package it, reach out to the candidates, and hopefully schedule a joint meeting with the Board of Trustees during your August meeting here. I think, through the chair, what we wanted this board to discuss is the process. So, this has happened in the last couple of years, I'm going to say two, if not three times. I believe two of the times, there was a joint interview of the candidates with both the Board of Trustees and the Board of Selectmen. The last time it happened, there was a decision made by the Board of Selectmen to have the Board of Trustees do all the interviewing and bring their preferred candidate, and the Board of Selectmen vote that candidate. So, I wanted to bring it to your attention this evening, potentially have a discussion on how you want to proceed with the interviews, so we can start letting these candidates know as we get the applications that they're either going to be here for a joint meeting, or they're going to be with the Board of Trustees, who would then make a recommendation to the Board of one candidate. So, up for discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Would that be a separate meeting, or for the, if we chose to do the interviews with them, or would that be an agenda item on a selectmen's meeting?
Through the chair, it could be either. I believe the time that the Board of Selectmen did it, the last time, I believe you brought in the candidates one night, and then, I think, on the second night, similar to the Finance Committee, I think then the second night you voted when the candidates were not here, although they're welcome to be here, it's a public meeting. I think you did all the interviews and then held off. I believe one time, the vote was taken actually while the candidates were here. So, it's been done both ways.
I know we've gone back and forth, and I certainly have never been one to let someone make a decision for me, so I am one of the ones who voted against the policy that, I think I was the only one voted against the policy who was on the board. We did amend it the last time to say that board members could submit comments and that the trustees would notify us when they were having the interviews, so that those of us who wanted to, we could go to the meeting. So, I don't feel personally that we need to constantly be changing this policy. I don't like the policy, I don't think we should have a board, any board, tell us who they want. That's not how things work in a democracy, but if board members are okay with keeping the policy with us submitting letters through the manager and getting that to the Board of Trustees and just letting us know, I'm happy to continue that, because I don't want to constantly be going back and forth every time there's a vacancy. So, in fairness to the Board of Trustees, I certainly don't want to, every time there's a vacancy, we have a new policy, so.
Through the chair, I think you have more backing this time around, Dan. I'd very much prefer to have a joint meeting, including the interview process as well, bifurcate it into two meetings where we can vote on the second, hold the meeting, hold the interviews in the first one. I think that's something we should be involved with.
Other comments? I'd also be interested in hearing from all of the candidates that apply. Do we need a vote of the board tonight as to which way we're going to, what format we're going to pursue with?
If you'd like to, I think you can do that. It's not listed here that it's a potential vote, but it's also can be a discussion, and we can put it on your agenda for July 9th, because we wouldn't be having the interviews until August anyway. So, I think tonight, if you, if you'd like, you've, I think I would recommend that you wait until July, the July 9th meeting, and then take a vote then, and then we can look it up, because Ed and I were just talking, Sharon's not here this evening, but I don't recall, Mr. Carpenter, was it actually a policy, or was it just a vote the last time to go with that process?
[inaudible]
Okay, so I think it would be nice if we could get the policy into your packet for the 9th, you can actually see what that policy was, and then potentially take a vote to revise it again. I just wanted to give you plenty of heads up on this, that this had come in, and again, thinking that August meeting would probably be the joint meeting, and that's if the Board of Trustees are even available for your August meeting. But we do have the option now, which we can talk about later, of doing a hybrid remote or a fully remote, so it should be a little easier to get 10 people together now, because you can always do 100% remote meeting one night, do all the interviews, even if it was an odd night off of either one of your meetings, that could work.
Any other comments? Sina, moving on to gift acceptances. We have a $50 donation from Joyce Limerow to the Police Department. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Proclaimations and recognitions, none. Discussion on meeting time for future Board of Selectmen meetings and remote option. So, I wanted to discuss, I know we moved it ahead, since we've been remote, we've been going at 7:00, and we almost moved it back to 6:00 tonight. I asked for 6:30 because I had a bit of a drive, and I wasn't sure if I was going to make it in time, even with the traffic, it was okay, so I don't know what the board's thoughts are on moving back to 6 o'clock for meeting time. It's up to everyone, but like you're in foot.
Mr. Carpenter? I still don't know what the future of work is going to be for me, so I would just ask, I don't, I'm happy to listen to other board members, but I don't know if I can make it for 6:00 or 6:30, depending on how the schedule's going to be. Last I knew, we were doing a hybrid, but, you know, there's five days in a week, and Monday might be that day that they need me absolutely to go out and do something, you know, far, far away, and I may not be able to get back, so that's, you know, my only caution. We're supposedly meeting, I think, the 21st of next month, so I won't have any hard and fast things to tell the board, but I'm certainly happy to listen to the board members and what they're revealed to me as.
I don't really have, I mean, the later the better for me, so, but I'm planning on utilizing the remote as much as I can, too, so, so it, you know, if it's good for Mr. Carpenter to do a little bit later, I'm all for that.
Any other conflicts?
I'm working a quarter mile away, live a quarter mile away. I don't want to jam either of you guys up in terms of traffic, so whatever, whatever you guys need is obviously, I'll be okay.
The same, I can make whatever work.
Okay, so it sounds like we're leaning towards later. Would you, Mr. Carpenter and Mr. Berthin, prefer 6:45, or should we just stay with 7:00?
I think 7:00 is good, that way, you know, if we do have people, I know tonight we don't, but it's always good to give the public an opportunity, and I think that's fairly consistent with what the other committees do in town, so it would be good to follow that, I think, anyways. I know some meet earlier, but I think the regulatory boards typically start at 7:00 during normal conditions.
All right, we can definitely move back.
Through the chair, do you want to discuss the remote meetings?
Oh, sure.
Whether you should want to have them?
Yeah.
See if we can get the technology.
We should, yeah, have a discussion as to whether or not we want to pursue remote, I mean, from what was just said, I think it's pretty clear that we do, but I don't know if the board members have other comments as to the remote portion, we may have to look at our policies.
IT can make it work?
Through the chair, we are meeting with them next week, but the short answer is yes, the longer answer is we just need to figure out how to exactly do that, but apparently it can work. Mike Moreno, IT Director, and Chris Hugo, our cable TV manager, said that they can work it out. I think what happens in a situation like that is somehow you have to have a screen, which would probably be this, so anyone calling in remotely, you can all see as well as they can see you. And I know it'll be later in the agenda, and I can explain what the law is now and how it's going to work, but basically, we think it's a great idea to continue remote, I'd like to see it permanent, if the legislature does that, that's what I testified on. I think it gives people the opportunity who, number one, the public, if, and most importantly, the public, if they can't get here, you know, if they have any kind of constraints in getting here, or concerns of driving at night, any of that, but they could still participate. I think you might get better participation. For board members, I think it's really critical, because, as you know, a board member could be away on business or vacation and still want to participate and be able to participate.
Going to school at UMass.
Going to school at UMass might help. So, I think it's a good idea.
If I could, you know, I just think that that was an awesome experience. I loved the fact of being able to split your screen, and, you know, you can see the participants on one side and have your agenda sitting there on the other side. You know, in the case of our last meeting, you know, I was completely tied up at work because of a problem, but yet I was still able to somewhat participate in the meeting, and if I, if we didn't have that, I would have never been able to participate at all in that meeting. So, I'm very much for the remote meeting, and obviously, I'll try to make as many as I can, but I like the fact that I can almost make them all when I'm from there.
Do the other board members have any comments? Say, I agree as well. I mean, I've liked the idea of remote participation for a while, for obvious reasons, so if we can continue it, if the legislature allows, absolutely. Sounds, sounds like we're all pretty much in agreement on that.
Great.
All right, moving on. You have an update from the town manager on Chapter 20, Acts of 2021, discussion, nope, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. So, about, I think, maybe 10, 11 days ago, the legislature approved of a change to the law that was signed by the governor, it was on a Thursday, a week ago, Thursday, and that, that change provides for temporary measures that were undertaken during COVID to be extended through April 1 of 2022. So, I think I kept you informed, I had testified on a bill to make that permanent, that did not go through yet, but there's still efforts to push that through in the next session as well, but this temporary measure is good because it goes through April 1 of 2022, not September 1. So, just a couple of highlights of it. Number one, the remote meeting. So, the difference being, pre-COVID, the open meeting law required that the chair always be in physical attendance as well as a quorum. So, it was challenging, and I think one of the reasons the board at that time didn't vote to do that, it was, it was a real challenge, and we also didn't have the technology, we didn't have the licenses, we didn't have the ability to see plans on a screen, that was a concern. So, what's new under the law that was passed by the governor during COVID is that you don't need to have a quorum in person, as long as your quorum is remote, and you also don't need to have the chair sitting in the room in person, it could be remote. And the other piece of it is, is law, as we've done for the last year and a half, as Mr. Berthin said, it's been a real, it's been a great experience, but we all learned how to do this, you just have to make access available to the public. So, we were able to pay for the licenses for GoToMeeting, which is the platform that we use through the CARES Act, and we're looking into, I think, now that this is a temporary measure extended because of COVID, I believe that extended licenses will probably be eligible as well. So, that is one change under the law, again, through April 1 of 2022, and the hope was, by those of us pushing to make it permanent, is to make this permanent, because it works, it's making for more interactive, engaging government, more transparency, there's all these good things to it. So, hopefully, it will continue. The other thing that was extended, which is another good thing, is the reduced quorum. So, this board had voted at a town meeting, so this board had voted to reduce the quorum to 40, to enable us to have town meetings in case people are still concerned about coming out, if, in case we get another, I don't even want to say it, but if COVID were to come back again in the fall, that could potentially affect our fall town meeting. So, we are allowed to go with that reduced quorum until April 1. So, at this point, it would just get us through our fall town meeting, not next year's annual town meeting, but by then, who knows what the situation will be with the law. And the other thing I wanted to point out to you was outdoor dining, which are your next two items. So, under this, communities are, the licensing authority for alcohol, which is the Board of Selectmen, is allowed to continue the outdoor dining extension without having to go to the ABC, without having to go through some of the other hoops that we used to have to go through, and I know this board has indicated a desire to find a permanent way to do that. We have in your, I'm skipping ahead, so anyway, that is the other piece of the legislation, and the last piece that applies to Auburn, but we didn't use it, was the ability for town meetings to have remote town meetings. And we didn't do that because we've got the electronic machines, we spread people in different rooms, so, again, I think we are not going to need to have our town meeting members get trained on remote from home, because I think that would be a challenge for some of them who've indicated a hesitation to use that kind of equipment, but we didn't need it, everyone felt comfortable, so we can do that in the fall as well.
Board members have any questions or comments? Mr. Carpenter?
I hope as part of this, we're going to look at the parking rigs, because I really do think that some of the businesses in town certainly have way too much parking for what the demand is for their service, and the other thing is, we have way too many compact spaces, because very few people drive compacts these days, so, you know, it would be good to take a look at those regulations. I don't think they've been looked at probably since, you know, it might even have been as late as '86. I think we did look at it in the master plan of 2004, 2006, but it would be good to take a look at that, and maybe even give the planning board the same type of flexibility as they have in the regional mall district, which is to look at parking and adjust it as needs. So, if we want to keep this, I mean, I think we have a lot of vacant space in people's parking lots that could really be put to use and help the businesses, so I'd like to see us, the committee that's responsible for that, to take a look at those things.
Through the chair, we're happy to do that, to bring it to the zoning bylaw review committee. That had been recommended by a couple of the Drury Square studies that we had done with CMRPC, that were, some of our bylaws are very restrictive, and maybe they made sense, you know, 20 years ago when they were put into place, or 15 years ago, but in today's world, some of them don't make sense, so happy to add that to the list of bylaws that need to be updated.
Anything else?
Sina, I think, moving on to Agenda Item 6B, which you had already touched on a little bit. I did, so under the Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, the outdoor table service can continue again by the, by the license holder. So, what we are recommending is that the board take another vote, so this would be the third vote. The first time you took one was when the crisis first happened, the pandemic, and you were allowed to do that under the law, and then that expired on a certain date. Then the governor extended that to expire, I think it was 30 days after the state of emergency ended. So, now this new legislation allows you to take that same vote through April 1 of 2022. So, there were two different votes here. One is for holders of liquor licenses, license for on-premise consumption, and the other is for common vic licenses. So, our recommendation would be that you extend it, just as you did it through COVID, it's a great opportunity for It's a great opportunity for the businesses. We can then reach out to those who are impact, who are holders of these licenses and let them know that they have that ability. The caveat that you would put in it the first time, which I recommend doing again, it worked out well, was that it would be approved conditional upon them meeting with the building commissioner and the director of public health and making sure that they had all their food permits and things were in place. And we actually had a couple of businesses take advantage of it, and hopefully they'll do so again. So that would be my recommendation. It's in two separate votes because it's, it's two separate licenses.
I'll make a motion, oh, sorry.
Board members have any comments or questions?
Great idea.
I'll make a motion to extend outdoor table service by holders of liquor licenses, license for onsite premise consumption, conditional upon the review by the building commissioner and the Department of Public Health in accordance with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 to April 1, 2022, or such date as said new law may be extended in the future.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous.
I'll make a motion to extend the period for outdoor table service of food and outdoor dining by holders of common particular licenses, conditional upon the review by the building commissioner and Department of Public Health in accordance with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 to April 1, 2022, or such date as the said new law may be extended in the future.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Tom, you have an update on ARPA and the CARES Act and FEMA funds.
Through the chair, I'm going to turn to Ed Kuzinovich, the Assistant Town Manager and CFO, for an update on all of this. There's a lot involved here, all COVID-related.
Thank you, Julie, and through the chair, to the members of the board. I wanted to bring you an update on the various funding sources we received from the state and federal government that had to do with COVID-19 and the recent American Recovery Stimulus Act, where we received some funds. There's a lot of different direct grants that the town received. The school department specifically received five direct grants from both the state and the federal government. In most cases, it's a federal flow-through to the state totaling, these five grants total about $1.50 million. And primarily, this money was earmarked for PPE, reopening up of schools and for remote learning capabilities. Most of these grants began, started really in, in the end of March of 2020, roughly a little over a year ago. And there are committed funds that take us through FY '23. So the total funding for the school alone was $1.50 million. Now we turn to the other direct grants. The town received a CARES allocation, which was derived by using our population, and we got $88 per resident in Auburn. That totaled $1.479 million. Now that money was not only for school purposes, but for town purposes as well. I could tell you, to date, we have spent $1,100,000. So we still have a buffer. This grant expires on 12/31/21, but very cautious, cautious about spending an additional penny since the state rel lifted its restrictions on May 29. So there's some uncertainty as to what would qualify now that the state has lifted those restrictions. And we're kind of working our way through to see what's eligible and what is no longer eligible. So we already have roughly one, a little over $1 million in the pipeline. There's also a FEMA aspect to this where we get initially with 75% of qualifying costs. They change, they change the reimbursement rate to 100%. And this is to be expended, I believe, through 9/30 of, of '20. So we've spent about $323,000 of eligible expenses. We submitted a request reimbursement of, number one, of a little over $200,000. We haven't heard back yet. So I updated the finance committee, and there's another piece to this, but I updated the finance committee in a meeting last week. I recommended a transfer of $30,000 out of our reserve account as a backstop to any cost that may be kicked out by FEMA or CARES. If FEMA determines that something is not eligible, we have the opportunity to file it through CARES, which we believe will then become eligible. But there may be some crossover costs that they deem ineligible, and I wanted to provide a sum of money in the event we have to absorb that. We are currently working, and we had a, a meeting with the department heads this week on the American Recovery Plan portion. And that's going to provide to Auburn a little over $5 million. There's a direct allocation that comes directly through the state of $1,700,000, almost 1.8 million. And there's a county allocation due to Auburn for roughly $3.250 million. Now, what complicates matters is there's categories that they deem eligible, and I'll quickly go over those. And then there are subsets within each category that we have to dissect and look at. But the major categories that they're saying are eligible under the ARBA money, a cost to support public health response, replace public sector revenue loss, water and sewer infrastructure, and in some cases, these aren't even COVID-19-related, equity-focused services, money to address negative economic impacts, they have allowance for premium pay for essential workers, broadband infrastructure. So those are the major categories, and there are subsets from within those. So we're currently sorting through that, waiting for some additional guidance from the Department of Revenue, who's working through the federal agencies to determine what we can spend the money on and what we can't. They recognize that a lot of communities do not have shovel-ready projects, for instance, water and sewer infrastructure projects. So they're allowing the use of this ARBA money, I believe, through the spring of 2026. So they're allowing communities to go out, prepare with architects, engineering services to prepare projects that we can go out and then expend money on. So these are the kind of things we're sorting through. But to give you the magnitude of the amount of money that the town of Auburn is going to receive, when we take all these projects, it's just shy of $8.3 million. So that's what we have to work with. We have to account for each and every one of those. The accounting and the admin aspect of this, of these various projects is immense. And it's going to continue because once we expend the money, at some point, well, we know it has to be audited by our independent auditors, but also we believe it's going to be audited by the feds at some point in time. So we're going to make sure that everything is by the book. We're very careful about its uses, its eligibility requirements, documentation that we can provide further down the road. So that's basically a quick update as to where we are on, on these funding sources.
Through the chair, if I may add to that, our plan is, it's going to take some time because US Treasury keeps releasing guidelines almost on a weekly basis. We're getting new updates, new guidelines, new ways to spend the money. So as Ed said, we met last week, what our, what we'd like to do is come up with a priority list of what we believe the dollars should be spent on and bring it back to this board for discussion. We're looking at a lot of different things. We're looking at, we'd like to get the biggest banks, and I hate to use that expression, but it's true, we'd like to maximize the impact of this, these dollars as much as possible and maybe address some things in town that we can't address because we haven't identified other funding sources to do that. For instance, certain COVID projects that maybe need to be done that we've applied three times for the state and we can't get a grant for it, but it's $1 million. So certain things like that, we want to get the list together from all the department head. We had some great ideas that came up last week, some of them we have to follow through on to see if it's even eligible. Ultimately, we'd like to get that list to you for some discussion. Some items are going to be, you know, kind of innovative, and others are going to be, this is the opportunity we have to fix, you know, something with the pump station, or, you know, there are going to be certain things that we feel we should recommend to you. We want this to be an effort where all of us look at it and say, this is what's good for the community and get your, your stamp of approval to go forward with some of these projects because this is a lot of money. On the CARES Act, it was a little different because it was real specific what we could use it for. Majority of it really went for PPE because that came about so suddenly. We were given, in one case, I think, three weeks to come up with eligible expenditures and get them in. Then they extended it, and we had more. But the CARES Act was a little different. That money really covered, as you can see, the air filters in some of the, in some of the buildings. We used a lot for the schools because they needed to get some things done to get schools open. We didn't have a lot of choices in that. It was real specific. But this, as Ed said, there's broad categories here, but we think we should focus on what's best for Auburn. It may not be what's best for a neighboring community of what they choose to do.
And I think, if I may, through the chair, I think some deficiencies, deficiencies became obvious during COVID. I think we were all thrown into the remote aspect. At times, the system would freeze, it would bog up. I think our broadband infrastructure really needs to be looked at. I know the school department had some issues. We had some issues. We continue to still have issues. And we're having those discussions with IT, but maybe that's one area we try to bolster because we don't know what's going to happen in the fall. Another shoe may fall. We may be back to where we were if, you know, if the variant takes hold and, and puts us a step or two back. So these are some of the things we're looking at. I think like Julian indicated, we, we threw it out there with the department heads. We have them thinking now. We're going to meet probably in a month or two, try to collect their thoughts, bring something back to the board, and come up with a plan on how to best utilize this money that has been earmarked for the town of Auburn. So number one, I'm pretty glad that we just got an assistant treasurer because obviously your job is, is crazy right now, crazier than it ever was. But my, my comment was going to be, and kind of comment question is, you know, a lot of these things, though it's, it's not exactly us applying for a grant, but I know that there's professional grant writers out there and people that specialize in this type of thing. And I wonder if it wouldn't be worth, worth it for the town to, you know, if you find somebody that, you know, is really up on making sure that the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, to make sure that we get these things approved, that we shouldn't spend a little bit of money to, to bring that, that extra expertise in. So, you know, I certainly would, would vote to approve it, you know, providing it's not half of what we're getting. But certainly, if there's small monies that, that we can bring in consultants or whatever to make sure that, that what we apply for, we get, you know, I just want to tell you, I'm, I'm behind that 100%. I think one of the gray areas, when you're looking at the economic impacts at the local level, it may go beyond the town of Auburn. And what are we allowed to do and what are we not allowed to do to offer some relief to those agencies or businesses that have suffered along with our residents? So I think all of that will kind of play out in the coming months, and we'll be able to, to at least consider potentially some of those things.
Through the chair, again, we appreciate that, Mr. Bertham, because that, that's exactly what we did with the CARES funds. We actually hired Tom Zedelis at the time because he, we needed someone to focus on keeping all these receipts together and the invoices and what's eligible and what's not, and which, was it going to FEMA, was it going to MEO, was it going to CARES? So now Tom is on our staff. So we, if it's eligible, we can keep open the possibility of hiring a consultant that can help guide this process because, as Ed said, this is a four- to five-year process. We're talking $5 million, and we want to make sure it's expended appropriately. If we only have three or four items that we decide as a, as a board and as an administration, if we jointly decide we're going to, we're going to fund these four things, that's a lot easier to manage than funding 50 different things. That may require someone. So all those things would be, be on the table. So thanks for saying that you would be supportive of that because I think it all depends on how many items we decide to fund with this money.
Other comment? I'll just say, I know Officer Lamro wrote a lot of the grants for the police station. Do we have other people in town than for each department, or how have we done in the past?
Well, so first of all, regarding this, there's a process that the state is still putting into place for getting these funds. So we just got half were already sent to us on a portion of the ARBA funds. The others, it's going to be a very specific process where they're going to tell us what portal to put the information into and how the money is coming to us. So we don't need someone to really be an expert in grant writing to get the funds because they're coming to us. We're getting the funds. It's a matter of how do you apply for those funds and get them sent into your accounts? But in general, every department has been writing their own grants. Each department head, as part of their goals, annual goals, has to seek and secure grants to support initiatives in their department. That's, that's something that we ask them to do. And each department has different people who are very good at it. As you know, you've seen Eilish Corey, who does a lot of the engineering-type grants, the stormwater grants. Joanna Paquin has been doing a lot of the DPW-related grants. I, I write most of the emergency management and homeland security grants. We have, police have a couple of different people depending on the grant. Sergeant Lamro does some of them. I know they have other people in the department depending on the type of grant that put in for the grants as well. In the planning office, I would say Adam and Shannon apply for economic development and planning-type grants. Caleb has applied for grants that are related to building. So I think everybody over the years has become pretty proficient at grant writing, and that's something that we really support.
Glad there's a diverse group.
It is a diverse group. But I, I wouldn't say there's a lot of crossover. You know, somebody in the police department wouldn't necessarily apply for a fire department grant, but they, they each have backups in their department who apply for the majority of the grants that are specific to their department. And then I fill in wherever needed. If we don't have anyone specific, then I do it. Until I can find somebody who can, who can take that part on.
Thank you. Anything else?
I just have one question, Mr. Chair. I know we have financial policy, so to Mr. Bertham's point, we restrict one-time revenues can't be for an ongoing expense. Is that going to be a problem if you needed to use these funds to hire somebody similar to Mr. Zedelis as a consultant to oversee this project? Do you see that as being an issue or not with the policies that we've adopted?
So I'm having a hard time hearing the question over the ASU, so I apologize. Something about using revenue for a one-time use?
Yes.
We hire consultants.
Our policies, the financial policies, we have.
In lieu of the financial policies.
Hiring a consultant. Would that be a barrier? Is that something we would need to carve out a potential exception to?
So as I understand it, the one-time use, when you can't use, and I'm assuming you're talking about free cash as a, as a revenue source to offset some accounting services or consultant services? I would not recommend that. Even though it's a one-time use, I think these funds would allow for those services to be paid out of this federal funding.
I just wanted to make sure the policy that we adopted with finance didn't preclude that because these are one-time funds, so they kind of fall into.
Right, but those one-time funds are limited to excess and deficiency as it, as it relates to free cash and the general fund. So no, this is outside of that.
If I can add to that too, here's another example. If we were, and we don't know that this will be a recommendation, but we've tossed it out there, if we were to decide we wanted to run some type of a grant program, we don't have the capacity to do that in-house. We would hesitant, be hesitant to hire an employee to run a grant program because the grant will expire, and then that position is gone. However, you can still do that if you put parameters on it so it becomes a special employer, an employee that's only here to, to manage the grant funds of a specific program so there's an end date on it. Or you can also look and do it through a vendor. So we've looked at that as well. If we wanted to run something, do you hire a vendor such as a CMRPC or a Pioneer Valley or somebody else who already manages these types of programs? or somebody else who already manages these types of programs? Can you look into paying them to do it so it's not our employee?
No, I was just concerned about the policy and just making sure that we weren't going to have to carve out anything. So as you explained, the free cash, it's specific to free cash. So that clears the way for it. So I'm not concerned about the position. I just want to make sure we're not inadvertently violating any rule that we might have adopted.
There's a lot, unfortunately, it's evolving all the time. And when you know you have the next five years, we want to be cautious because same with the CARES. We didn't spend our entire allocation. There was more than we could have spent. We didn't spend just to spend. We spent what we needed. And then we thought if COVID rejuvenates and comes back and we have additional expenditures, we didn't want to expend all the money. We wanted to have a cushion there. And it's the same thing with this. We've got a few years to spend this. Let's be smart about what projects we want to fund and when we want to do them.
If I may, you know, I would say it's money well spent. You're investing money today to protect the town for any future liability if something is deemed ineligible two or three years down the road. I can just, I can't tell you the magnitude of work. The invoices AAF to copy, you need check numbers, you need payroll records. It all has to be logged in by category, submitted to FEMA, submitted under CARES, journal entries, working back and forth with the school department. It truly is, it's more than a full-time job. It's a lot of work. So we did, right from the get-go, hire a accounting firm to help us assist in pulling all this together. I would strongly recommend that we continue that going forward.
Board members have anything else? Nothing? We have an update on Auburn Housing Authority and the town-appointed tenancy.
Thank you. So at the last meeting, I wanted to keep the board informed of what's going on. So this is just a further update. So the initial notification that the Auburn Housing Authority gave under the new law to its tenants did not meet the law. They had only notified their state tenants, and under the law, they need to notify the state and federal housing tenants, all of them, to have the opportunity to apply to become the new town-appointed tenancy. And for those of you who are new to this, previously, all the seats were elected but for one that was appointed by the governor. So now there's still one appointed by the governor, one appointed by the town, meaning the Board of Selectmen under the law, and then the others elected. So the seat that's available now qualifies under the law as the new town-appointed tenancy. So DHCD, who oversees some of the activities of the state portion of the Auburn Housing Authority, actually, I believe they paid a physical visit. If not, they had a meeting somehow, they had a meeting. And they determined that the initial notice that had been sent out was not, it didn't meet the law. It needed to have a date on it. It needed to have a date that the tenants needed to apply, and it needed to be sent to all of the tenants. So the Housing Authority has since sent out the appropriate notice. I believe that was maybe less than two weeks ago. And in that notice, they specified a July 17 date for tenants to submit to the town clerk if they're interested in being considered by this board for the tenant-appointed seat. So under the law, 30 days after that deadline, this board has to vote to do the tenant-appointed seat. So based on the dates that we were given from the Housing Authority, it works out well that your August meeting would be the meeting to have a tenant-appointed seat. We had received one application from a state tenant. But again, that application came in before they had notified everybody. So we have to wait now until July 17. So the state law doesn't give you a lot of time. Doesn't give any of us a lot of time. Once we get those names, we'll reach out to them and invite them. I wanted to ask if this is what you'd like to do, invite them into the August, your next August, I think it's the 12th meeting, if I have the right date, for interviews. And that is, again, if there are more than one applicant. If you have one applicant, I believe you still have to consider that applicant and take a vote. So you may only have one. So I can't tell you right now how many we're going to get. We'll watch it for the July 17, and then we'll work with them. But I would just keep it in mind that I think your August meeting would be the meeting that you'd have to vote. And then you're within the state deadlines. You make the deadlines.
August 9.
August 9. Thank you.
Do board members have any questions or comments?
I would love it if we could get a family tenant to apply because, you know, currently, the board has always been, you know, heavily weighted towards seniors. But I think most of now the state, housing is actually the family housing. Most of the senior housing has been turned into federal except for a very small portion of it, as I recall. So it'd be great if we could get a younger member on board and, you know, bring that, you know, those issues to bear because I'm sure there are some. It would be good to see some younger folks balance out the existing board members.
Through the chair, I agree completely. I watched a few past meetings, and it doesn't feel like they're represented at all during these meetings. So I'd like to see that as well.
Other comments? So would we be interviewing the candidates at all ahead of that August 9 vote?
Well, this is a completely new law, and it's a new process, so it's up to this board if you'd like to do that. If, I guess my recommendation is, the Housing Authority gave them a July 17 deadline. So you could do the interview and the vote on the same night on August 9. I think if you, I think you should interview anyway. I think it makes sense. You do it for other boards and commissions. You want to know the person that you're appointing. At least get a feel for that person. I know you did that for the Auburn Housing Authority vacancy under that Chapter 41, Section 11, when Monica was selected by you. And happy to say she ran for the seat again on the election and retained the seat. She won, so she is still on the board. So I think it's a good process that you have. I would recommend that you continue to do that. And you could do it on the same night. Unfortunately, again, the state doesn't give you a lot of options here. I mean, you could hold an extra meeting in between the two if you wanted to have a meeting just to do the interviews and then take the vote in August. But again, you only really have maybe less than two weeks in there from the deadline that the state law requires.
Board members have a preference?
Well, I think it would be covered by the policy. We have a general policy for any seat that we appoint. So I would say that we should follow that for any committee that we would appoint. And obviously, maybe we need to make changes to it because this is a different animal than perhaps the boards that we're accustomed to appointing. They have a much different, they're not subject to the charter. Their responsibilities are very different than what we're accustomed to appointing. You know, not that the boards that we appoint aren't important. It's just this is very different. So it might be good for a policy going forward, a project, to decide what this is going to be for this particular seat, make an exception to the policy for this seat so that we can really get a good feel for what the person would like to do.
Are you suggesting we add that to a future agenda to review the policy?
Yeah, well, we usually, in June, I know we've always set board goals in June. Last year, we didn't because there was just three of us and we were having a special election in September, so it didn't make sense. And then we decided because of COVID, there was so much going on, we didn't do it that year. But typically, I believe we do. So, I mean, not that we're, I'm certainly just throwing out there. I think that is a good, and that this is a new seat. And I think we should look at that policy anyways. I think some of the questions we ask, we're already asking on the applications, so why are we asking the applicant again? Nine times out of 10, they actually put that in their letter to us. So, you know, it might be good to talk to the boards and commissions and see if they might have, you know, some questions that they would like added into the policies, just to bring it, you know. They know their boards better than we do. So it would be nice to, typically, the chairs don't ask a lot of questions when they come in. So it'd be nice, maybe, when we're not under the gun, to give them an opportunity to share their, you know, experience and their other board members' experience to help with the process.
For the time being, I'm fine with a single-night vote and...
Okay.
Does that work for everyone else as well? All right. I don't think we need an official vote on that, so.
Correct. I just put this on for discussion, and then it will be on the agenda for the, you don't need to vote it, we'll just get it on your agenda.
Moving on to tabled items. For Board of Selectmen member items, we have a discussion on our September volunteer appreciation event by Mr. Carpenter.
Yes, so up until last year, we've held annually, the board has, along with town administration, we've held a joint event for volunteers, current volunteers and people who may have left the board in the last year, I would say this year, too. Seems that we didn't get to have it last year. We do have money in the budget for that. We usually hold it here on a Monday night that we don't meet and in September before town meeting. So I do know that we're still kind of in between COVID, and we do need to keep an eye on that. But I would hope that we could do this this year because it seems a very popular event for the volunteers. And it's one of the events, few events that is held outside of work hours that they can get to. And it's a way for the town in general to show an appreciation, so.
Other board members have any comments?
I don't have a comment on that because I agree with Mr. Carpenter there. I do have a comment that I heard from a resident today and very concerned with traffic and speeding on Auburn roads. So kind of more of a public comment that, you know, to anybody watching, you know, please consider the fact that there's a lot of construction going on in town. You know, there's construction workers that are focused on their equipment that might be stepping out into the roadway. You know, we're now getting back outside after a year of being inside. And, you know, kids might not always be thinking about how close they are to the road or an object that might go out into the road. So, you know, just kind of keep your speed down. I mean, obviously, follow the speed limits, but go slower than that this time of year. There's motorcycles, there's all kinds of people outside doing work. So, you know, I'm going to address this further as well as a concern from the resident. But I just thought I'd take this opportunity to also make a kind of a public announcement to please beware of everything going on in town this time of year. Thank you.
Mr. Carpenter, I don't know if you had finished with what you wanted. So I just want to go back to that before we...
No, I usually, we have a subcommittee. I'm on the subcommittee. I can't remember who was on the subcommittee with me. I'm happy to do it myself. I mean, obviously, we're going to have it here. And board members, you know, the chair and vice chair and the chair usually does the introductions and any presentations along with the manager. So it's really a nice event because you get to, you know, and they get to sit and talk with people that they don't necessarily serve with or just they don't have a chance to actually find out what they're doing outside of their public service. So it's a good thing. So I'm happy to continue and keep the board up to date and obviously, keep in touch with the manager to make sure that if anything comes up with COVID, we're prepared to do something different. Want to talk to Mrs. Coyle to see if there's anything that she would recommend we do differently. We usually do a buffet-type of thing. So I know maybe people wouldn't be comfortable with that. So we, you know, but I know we also have a Lebanon fund, so trying to do everything.
Through the chair, this year more than ever, many of these boards haven't seen their colleagues in so long. I think this would be great.
I actually wanted to ask you who was on the subcommittee because I had been on it with you up until I wasn't on the board anymore. So I didn't know if the subcommittee had been reestablished with a new member, or it sounds like it wasn't. So I don't know if that's something that we should take a vote on at our next meeting if someone else wants to join you in planning that.
Anybody is welcome. I'm always willing to lay off some of the work on someone else.
I do want to ask, Ed, do we have, how much for funds in the budget related to the volunteer event? Because I don't think we included it in last year's budget.
So, no, I look, there isn't an amount in '22, but certainly, you know, I think the amount the year before is like $300, $400, $500. I'm not talking a large amount of money. I think we can come up with that somehow. If it requires a transfer, I don't think that would be a problem. So I don't see that as being an issue. We'll manage to come up with the money. I think it's more the logistics and the planning of it all that presents some concerns.
So I guess at our next meeting, we may want to talk to Darlene Foyle and have a potential vote to add a member to the subcommittee if anyone's interested. With that, does anyone else have any comments or questions? Seeing none. We have the minutes from the May 10, 2021, and May 24, 2021 meetings. Are there any omissions or corrections? Seeing none, I'll accept them. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed?